It's the bell.
I know.
We're in downtown Prior.
Okay. Good evening. This is a mixed session of Athens City Council. We're going to begin with some committee meetings, quite a bit of committee meeting, and then we're going to have some special session ordinances to read and possibly some to actually pass. So, we will begin, it is about five minutes after seven, we'll begin with our Transportation Committee. I'm going to be talking about West Union Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we have some good news to report. This regards our West Union Street project. And the good news is that just last week, or two weeks ago, the state EPA granted our application for surface water improvement, which is part of that particular project. So, that's the good news. We'd already done some ordinance, an ordinance regarding the authorization of funds in construction, but now with the additional monies that are going to come from that, we need to redo our ordinance, I think is the best way to say that. So, in the end, there's a lot of detail to this ordinance, but in the end, we need to appropriate $51,000 additional dollars because of the grant money that was received. And those monies, the different funds, I can explain to everybody, but you do have some information in front of you as well. Where we have to post the funds up front, and then we are reimbursed. So, that is why there also needs to be monies moved around. So, in terms of detail, we, our initial appropriation out of the street fund, we've needed, we need to bump that up to $190,365. The highway fund remains the same at $66,000. The wheel tax fund was $191, is now $270,000. The water maintenance fund, since I remind everyone, the West Union project is not just resurfacing, but stormwater, sewer, and water lines. That initially was $186,865, that's now $227,865. The additional fund for the stormwater is $120,000, that's new. The sewer debt fund remains the same. Issue one funds remain the same. So, the total, I believe, is $1,323,538. So, I think that's the main issues that needed to be discussed. And then, Service Safety Director, would you like to add to that?
Regarding the additional monies, we have to appropriate because it is a reimbursable grant for the SWIFT grant, so that is an additional appropriation as well. It's incorporated here, so.
So, ultimately, this ends up being a project where we're really getting a lot more done than initially we had set out to do because of this additional grant money as well.
And like we like to say, it's an educational town, and this has an educational component. It had to.
It did.
In terms of we'll have a descriptive sign that indicates what measures were taken to alleviate the storm in that.
I did want to mention one thing from the grant letter. They received 84 grants, of which 23 were funded. So, we were very fortunate to be included in that group. So, any other questions or comments from council?
No.
Okay. Mayor?
So, last year, we were trying to do this with the other water line improvements, Ranson, Harris, Joneswood. And again, it was more expensive than we could actually do. So, we folded over this year, and again, pursued more money and more grants. It worked out, I guess.
And the project has been bid. That would be the other piece of this. The project has been bid. It came slightly under the bid, I believe, or right around.
Slightly under 10%.
Okay. Under, okay. And so, the other issue is that they probably want to begin work ASAP.
We do. I would request suspension tonight emergency. We've been talking about it for a year.
Right.
And we just had to adjust the dollars because of additional grant funding and higher costs.
Yes. Okay. Yes.
Just a brief comment or question. Most of the grants were written internally through the Public Works.
Yeah. Both the Public Works Commission and also this, I think, SWIFT was a primarily designated by the project manager.
Yeah, that's just one more thing that's certainly worth throwing on accolade, again, to the performance of the city, what the city has done in terms of grantsmanship and being able to go after state and federal dollars to get a lot of our work done in the city.
Well, really, only about a third of the grants were funded, you know, and we were in that category, so. Very good. Okay.
I'm going to move on to the Finance and Personnel Committee.
I think I need to do the miscellaneous.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Fourth of July.
So, 4th of July, which is coming up next week, we have a plethora of events here. Starting at 10:00 a.m., the Athens City Pool is open and free admission until 8:00 p.m. 3:00, there's a fabulous Fourth King and Queen judging at the Community Center. There's a cruise-in from 5:30 to 10:00 p.m. at the Community Center. That is sponsored by Larry Conrad Realty and the Plains Lions. And all profits go to Athens Food Pantries and the Lions Eyeglass Fund. 6:00 p.m., there's crowning of the fabulous Fourth Senior. 6:30 to 9:00, kids game and jumping castle. I'm assuming this is all at the Community Center. 7:00 p.m., flag raising at the Veterans Memorial Park behind Athens City Pool. And the speaker will be the auditor, the county auditor. There will be craft vendors all evening, and so there's lots of food. 7:00 p.m. is the teen pool party at the pool. 9 to 11, WATH, WXTQ, they are in remote in the parking mall to highlight the fireworks music. And 10:00 p.m. is our fireworks. So, this is all happening Thursday, July 3rd, so the day before. July 4th, Friday, 8:30 a.m., there's the lineup for the fabulous Fourth Parade lineup. And then, the Fourth Parade is actually at 9:30 a.m., sponsored by the Kenny Kerr family. All entries welcome, cars, floats, marching units, bicycles, horses, fire trucks. Okay?
Fire truck.
Fire trucks. And then, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., the City Pool is again open, free admission. Bring a food donation, please. So, they ask on both the free admission to bring a food donation that will be going to local food pantries. There is contact information here, but we will put this on the city website, so people look up. And we want to thank the people, Clyde Baker and Tammy Blake, who are the contact people. But we will put that information up on the city website.
Most definitely.
Thank you. That would be it for transportation, parades.
Thank you. Let's try Finance and Personnel again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Several items tonight, first of which is our fire station number one on Columbus Road. And we do have, the city has received information from SMBH Structural Engineering regarding some repairs that need to be made. There are significant, some significant cracks in the concrete beams and the structural slab. And there's also some cracking and spalling in the concrete. And so, they are recommending removal of the spalled concrete and patching with a specialty concrete material. And then, also that there's some corrosion that they've noted on the steel vehicle barriers along the north and south sides of the driveway exhibit that have some corrosion and the paint is peeling. The estimate for the repairs exceeds the $50,000 limit, and so, city administration is seeking approval for authorization to proceed with a bid for the repairs. And we do have some photographs available for people to take a look at if people are interested, but this cracked wall is very evident from this photo. And then, there's also a failed connection of the channel to the building, that's another exhibit that we have, that council members can take a look at.
And so, you know, we began this in February, January, and we received the preliminary results in May. And near the end of the May, Bill Morgan, who you contacted with for architectural services, indicated it's not in danger of falling down today, but if we can get it done, and I've gone to the mayor, and he has capital improvement money that's already been appropriated, let's go ahead and get this started. We would like to do the window of being able to do construction between August and prior to, of course, Halloween, October. So, I would request consideration at your next regular council meeting to bring this forward. So, yes.
Is some of the damage being caused by the earth underneath it subsiding or shifting, or is...
They did not indicate that.
Well, the reason I ask is I see this one photograph where there's a...
Substantial crack.
It's a gap between the foundation and the pillar itself, which means either the pillar rose on its own, or the ground went away from it.
They need to put in additional expansion joints. That was what was missing, is what they indicated. So, from the...
You've got steel and concrete. Coefficient expansions are different, and as a result, that's why it's pulling away. They actually talk about putting a railing in and actually putting expansion joint throughout it. So, they're going to do a slight redesign on some of that. Again, a lot of it's not critical, but it is, you know, something that needs to be maintained. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. I've had enough engineering, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how you make a mistake like that, sort of like Engineering 101.
Well, if I look at these, the anchors pulling away there, I suspect it took a long time for that to happen. So, usually, I do see something where the cracking, another page there with the cracking.
Yeah, right.
I've seen that on quite a few stairways, where they put the metal in and don't have any room for expansion or contraction.
How long, how old is that building?
I don't know. I should know offhand, but I don't.
30 years, wouldn't it?
Easy, 30, yeah.
Yeah.
If I was going to do it by architectural design, I'd say it was done more than 30, plus or less 50.
Sixties, maybe 60s.
Yeah.
Maybe it was.
So, we'll find out.
If I recall correctly, initially, it wasn't designed to hold the later fire trucks we have today versus what was in existence in the 60s, which is partially why there's been a need for continued work on reinforcement and support.
And the hillside, as challenging as Athens is, and you did authorize the repairs in order to bring up the reinforcements so that the new ladder truck could be housed there. So, I am working on getting kind of a schematic, a spreadsheet of how many dollars have gone into our department headquarters, but absence, relocation of the fire station, we've got to support the one we have, so.
Yeah. I believe last year, we were doing the roof, if you remember. And as I say, when that truck came in, we had to shore it up, as you said, put some I-beams on the bottom. I think we've actually filled in some of the, it's in a pillar system, which makes it more difficult. And we've filled in a few of those pillar areas just to stabilize it.
That was a previous one, so.
Yeah.
And the seven, almost eight years up here, we've done a number of repairs. We just need to continue.
So, we will be moving it forward then, next regular session, so that we can get the money authorized for the repairs then. Second item has to do with equipment purchase that is proposed for the Community Center. Some of the equipment in the gym, if I'm remembering correctly from the reports to the Advisory Recreation Committee, they're probably 15 years old and have a little bit of trade-in value. And Rich Campatelli has obtained a quote for replacement of some of this equipment that totals $52,000-plus dollars. And so, we would be, he is seeking authorization to go ahead and purchase the equipment. It would be from, if I'm looking at this right, the Community Center Operations Fund. It has an unappropriated balance of approximately $242,000. So, we probably would round it slightly up to $55,000 maybe.
And then, I defer to the auditor. I believe she'll put this under capital improvements. And this is state bid. This is procurement under DAS.
Okay.
So, that pricing is already established.
So, we're really talking about 52 rounded up for another 5? Is that what I'm hearing? Or 250?
Up to $55,000, up to 55?
The email I received today actually comes, or say...
Well, those are separate. I think she's going to address the supplies separately.
The supply section, okay. I thought you wanted to go with the one.
Oh, yes. In addition to that, excuse me, I'm glad you reminded me, the, is it 5,000 in supplies that is needed?
So, about 55 in capital, 5 in...
5 in supplies.
5 for rec.
For both rec and...
He has requested that.
Oh, 5,000 each.
Did I say that?
Each.
Sorry.
Okay. For rec and Community Center. Okay.
Total 10.
Supplies.
There'd be two different fund lines, 270, 271.
He believes that'll get them through the end of the year. He just wanted to bring that forward.
And it's a busy time of year, yeah, so.
I'd like to just make one comment. We've been talking a lot the last few meetings about our arts, parks, and recreation. And someone commented to me, because it's out in the press now, people are paying more attention, they know a levy may be coming forward. And I know we're talking finance, but I believe that we really need to look at our West State Street restroom facilities. There are a continuous flow of people coming in from out of state, out of town, for these ball tournaments and things like that. And I don't know if anybody's been in them recently, you know, in the, one of the women's, there's not even a door. And people send their little kids in there, there's no way to lock the doors. The structure, to me, is already there. It's not like we have to build a new restroom facility. We just need to update and upgrade the building and really make it safe. People send their little kids off there to do that. And I don't know that we even, I don't know if this is part of the current budget status, or you're looking at doing this with the levy, or what you're looking at. But it's been this way for quite some time. And this person was just saying, as a tourism kind of thing, and you're bringing in funds for these tournaments, and all these people are coming in, but those bathrooms are not in great shape. So, this isn't really the time to talk about it, but I just thought I'd bring it forward since we're talking finances.
I agree. Since we have some buildup in there, you know, these exercise machines seem to be prioritized. But this, these are things that we're able to do, you know, with the renewal of the levy also. Make them accessible, make them, you know, up to date with the energy efficiency flows and what we have. We do not garner income from those tournaments. It is all done under the MOU with the Sandlot Group or other groups that are sponsoring, so, other than the city-sponsored recreational programs. And there is a cost associated, and one of the reasons Rich even indicated the supply costs are up is because of the number of tournaments, the sheer, you know, stocking of toilet paper and paper towels and what have you. But he did say that they do get in-kind work, but...
In terms of maintenance of the fields.
Yes.
And again, this is something to look into and start programming for, repairs and upgrades of these facilities. I wasn't aware it is in a bad shape, but I don't make it down that often.
Any given day, that many people on a field and...
Yeah.
And it's both the men's and women's, and I can speak to that, just by playing co-rec softball through the city for 10 years. It's been that way for a long time.
It's been that way for a long time. It's kind of like, it's kind of, kind of a question in my mind, how it's gone that long for this long, honestly, because they are not really, yeah. I wouldn't go let, send my kid in there by themselves, you know, it's just...
I also wanted to point out, it's not just the West State Street restroom facilities, but also, the other day, again, no, there's a shower curtain on one stall, no door on the other, so, no doors whatsoever. The sink, you have to hold on, so, you know, if you're a child in there washing hands, then good luck, or you better have a parent with you. So, we do, we do have a great need to upgrade, and I'm hopeful that that can be part of the work that we do with this, with the arts, parks, and rec master plan over the next few years.
And maybe even revisiting the MOU.
I hear you.
Between Sandlot and the city.
You have T-shirts or something, right?
Write in a line item for toilet paper.
Janitorial services.
Yeah, these are helpful comments to keep in mind about the state of the facilities.
This is one reason why we're trying to put this on a levy, one, to reestablish something, to bring up the snuff. The other thing I want you to be aware of is that these facilities get a lot of use. You all know that as well as I do, whether it's Sandlot, or the, you know, the ball fields, or the soccer fields, which we don't even possess, but the fact is, there's a lot of use on this. It's one of those feel-good things that we love to have, that is Recreation Arts and Parks. You know, the conversation about trying to put some bathrooms up at Sales Park, that would be another infrastructure. We also have a high rate of breakdowns on that. We've had vandalism in all, probably I suspect, every facility that we own and a park. And therefore, we do have some attrition that gets, they get damaged, you know? So, how to balance that, you know, how to make it work? And that comes down to funds and money. And again, you've been in the conversation with those people, saying, "We want police." You know, "We want fire protection," you know? So, everything else, you know, you have to balance it out. The budget reflects that, you know, in the general fund. Recreation is, we have a piece, you know, funneled off for income tax for the recreation, arts, parks, and recreation. That's why the levy's in place, that we're proposing a new one to help us along.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other miscellaneous finance items of which I need to know about, or we need to mention tonight?
I was, I was going to go ahead and mention the staffing. And what, we have a known pending retirement in the police department. And what the police chief is seeking is a 26 position with a sunset clause, meaning there are 25 under the staffing ordinance now. We'd add a 26 that would sunset by the end of September, because that is the time period when the other officer will be leaving. And that then would allow us to go ahead and hire an officer, get them on board in advance, so that we don't have, so, if we're doubling it all, it's probably going to be less than two months at this rate, so.
And I'm assuming then you'd like to bring that, given that it's September, you'd like to bring it forward at the next...
I would.
...council meeting.
And the other request that I'm still exploring is about a six sewer MT position. And that is due to two long-term injury leaves at this time. So, for example, today, I think he was down to two men.
Two, fifth of the week.
Three, was it?
No, two.
Two. And one of which who fell ill in the heat today. So, if you're having trouble with getting sewer response, understand that we're trying to, you know, cover everything with our water crew. Our street crew is out on East State Street, I know you've seen that, so we are trying to cover, but that has a, I need to explore a little bit further on what that sunset date would be. It would, of course, sunset by the end of the year, and your new staffing ordinance would kick in for next year, but...
And is your hope that you could combine both of those in the staffing to move forward?
I would hope so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to City and Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess Josh Gelber is going to talk to us about the, if Josh is around.
He's coming out right.
There he is. Going to talk about the time order at the converter boxes, which is, I think, some citizens have experienced some trouble.
You don't have to sign it.
Yeah, so, regarding the analog to digital conversion, I guess, kind of starting from the beginning, basically, a couple of years back, channels everywhere were broadcast via analog, that's the way it's been for a long time, but now, digital technology taking over, channels are switching over. Probably, you know, 90% of the channels switched over years ago. We are one of the last stations to do so, and that's all this is, is Time Warner is basically shutting down the last analog, making them digital. So, our channel's not disappearing, you don't have to pay extra for it. The only thing that's changing is we're going to a different spot on the channel lineup. And for everybody that has a digital TV, which is essentially a TV made after, say, 2005 or so, or that has a cable box provided by Time Warner, nothing's going to change. You've just got to go to, I believe it's 95-6, but I would check just to be sure. If you don't have either one of those, you will need a digital converter, which, if you contact Time Warner, number should be on our website, they will actually provide you with a remote and the digital converter for free until, I believe, October of next year, or no, September next year. So, yeah, again, everybody, if you contact Time Warner, they will give you all the technology you need for free. And you can also, if you don't want to go through them, you can buy your own. They're about $15 to $30 used on eBay, or just any, like Best Buy, or something like that. After that, after September next year, I believe they'll charge $1.50 per month to have a box installed in your house. And I believe that's it.
So, it's September 15th, or September of 2015 that you're talking about, to where it goes from being free?
So, over a year.
Yeah. So, you have, as long as you, I think you have to contact them by August, but as long as you do so by August, you will pay no fee to have Time Warner give you this technology, and then you'll just have to go to the different channel to find us. But nobody should have to pay any upgrade fee. The only upgrade fee, I think, that confused people was anybody that has a basic plan, so basically, the lowest tier of Time Warner, that wants to upgrade to, say, a premium package or something like that, you know, get your HBOs or your couple hundred extra channels. Those people would see a price increase, but that is entirely optional. You don't have to do that to get our channel. Our channel will remain on the most basic.
When is the change?
I believe it already happened June 10th, at least according to this paper that they gave us. I don't have a non-digital TV, so I can't.
That's fair.
It did? Okay. Yeah. So, theoretically, it should have already happened. So, yeah, just get in touch with Time Warner, and they'll hook everybody up for free.
So, encourage people to do that for free before August, is what the point is.
Yeah, absolutely do it as soon as possible. And they, they did this years ago, too, when they first started changing over. These people are just the last to catch up, but like I said, they're being, they're being very nice about it, providing, providing everything for free.
It is good.
So, one thing, the letter that you're referencing came to my office. Is it possible to put it up as a PDF for the city, city website?
Yeah. I think we already put a memo up on the website, but I'll pop this up there, too.
Yeah. And the cutoff is August 10th for the digital upgrade free, I think. I'm reading the same letter you've got right there. And realize, they've moved us around before. We used to be Channel 15. All the peg channels have moved around since, so that's, that's how it works.
Well, they have moved us around, but you can still get, get it. I can't get any of those. And just to clarify, that charge will be per box.
Yeah. Within the home.
Yeah. If you have more than one TV, you have to pay for each one to have the box. So, you, obviously, you've looked for the free, we're trying, you're trying to get the free serp, the free box.
Well, I haven't done anything yet, but I imagine.
I was correct on this letter, because it would say that government access is 96.6.
That might be it.
Okay.
I don't know. Check it out.
Yeah, I was, I was just reading over this real quick, a little while ago. But yeah, this is also the form you have to fill out. you have to fill out. We'll put this up on the website as well.
Okay. So, what will ninety-six-six actually be in terms of the channel numbers? There's no such thing as a ninety-six-point-six.
Well, if you were to be scrolling through, you'd get ninety-six, then you'd get one, two, and three.
Yeah.
Does it go as high as six?
No, it doesn't.
No, I think it jumps. It jumps back and forth. It's kind of weird.
Well, there's a lot of channels that have those numbers after them now.
Yeah, thanks to digital now, you'll have a thirty-four dash seven and a thirty-six dash two, so...
The way Scott explained it to me is that essentially, because they went from analog to digital, that particular channel area can now fit three, two or three channels, so you could get ninety-six subsets of it, I guess.
Yeah, and, and most remotes even have the dash on the remote now, so you can even type it in that way.
And the remote's this big.
Yeah, yeah, they're approximately this size.
Otter Hector's is an interesting question, and that is that does, if a household, would a household need more than one box, and if they need more than one box, are multiple boxes free?
You wouldn't need it for every TV that's not digital, or set up with a cable box already.
And are those multiple boxes until September of 2015 free of charge?
According to this letter, they are.
We'll find out.
We will find out. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Oh, you're welcome.
Segueing from that, but still within the TV domain, Matt Green is going to speak to us about the Athens Community Television, and more importantly, equipment requests.
Yes.
On some dated equipment. We kind of talked about this with the Tricaster system, which we approved not too long ago, through an ordinance for purchasing and upgrading system here, and this is similar equipment that's four years old now, in need of replacement.
Yeah, we, we're still kicking along with our VT toaster, which is older than the Tricaster, but it works fine. No need to replace it just yet. Our biggest need are some video cameras that, you know, community members that come in and borrow equipment. Most of our cameras have broken down and stopped working. I think we purchased our last lot of cameras, it was either the end of 2008 or the beginning of 2009, so they did a pretty good job for as much as they were used. The list, I put, you know, some camcorders on there, three hundred bucks apiece. Last time, I purchased cameras that were around the eight-hundred, nine-hundred-dollar area. Technology's changed. You can get an HD camera for a lot cheaper now. We don't want to, you know, these cameras will be fine for what they're used for, because they're going to get used and abused and eventually break, so there's no need to buy top-tier cameras for people to go out in the snowstorms with, and who knows where else they'll end up with them, so... And another plus side, the previous cameras that have broken down, they were using tape still. It was digital tape, but it was still tape, so in order to capture the video to a computer, it was done in real time. The newer cameras would have internal, you know, like flash memory, basically, so we can just transfer the files to a computer for editing, and it'll save a lot of time. The next item listed are some memory cards that will go in those cameras as well. I'll try to, you know, tell people, if you want to save all of your footage, I suggest you buy your own memory card, but we have some here for you to use. Some bags that put the cameras in to protect them, some newer tripods, some headphones for people to wear when they're out shooting, so they can hear what they're recording. And some things that we haven't had for people to check out before are some on-camera lights, so when they're, you know, uptown at block party, or, you know, wherever they decide to go, they have the option of using a light to light up a room, and I've used a couple of these when I've shot weddings, and they're just awesome. They help out a lot, because I've shown up at wedding receptions, and it's like candlelight, and they want you to shoot video in there. It's impossible. So, you turn on your spotlight, and people scatter, but... And then some wireless lavalier microphones, that's been one of our big issues. Some of our producers go to meetings at the library, or, you know, up to Columbus to different meetings, just all over the place, and they always have horrible audio, because they're using the onboard camera microphone instead of, you know, like you guys having microphones in front of you, or one right here in front of me. It just, you get a lot of room noise, and it doesn't sound great. So, we'd have the option of, if they so desire going up to the speaker and asking, "Can we put a mic on you and get some better quality out of that?" That's our number-one priority, is the field equipment. The editing section there for three new computers, the computers we currently have are Mac Minis, which is the lowest tier mine as well. They still function, they work, they're just kind of sluggish when it comes to trying to pump HD video into there. We don't broadcast in HD, or which we did. A lot of people like to produce their programs in HD for themselves, and then we broadcast the standard definition version. That would be like the second most important thing, as far as equipment to get. Microphones for our studio, we have a couple Clip-On Lavalier mics currently. Occasionally, somebody will bump it with their foot, and it'll get staticky. I think Jeff's experienced this occasionally when he's been on the program. So, just, and this would actually be for four microphones. They come in a pair of two, so four mics for a hundred and fifty dollars. The last item there is our master control system. It's a Casnet system. It works awesome. There's nothing wrong with it, except for when Windows stops supporting XP, we've been starting to get some trouble out of it. We've had a box pop up that was, you know, there saying XP is no longer supported, and I've had to go down to the station just to close that box in the middle of the evening. Then one day, I came in, and it was just black on the screen, but the audio was still playing, and I checked all of our cables, no problem. I restarted the computer, and it's been fine since, and that was about two weeks ago. So, I called them the other day to see if we can renew a service contract to where we could upgrade to Windows Seven or Windows Eight, and add some additional storage to the computer, and I haven't heard back from them yet, but that was Friday afternoon when I talked to them. Hopefully, I'll get an answer from them. I believe when it came up for a service contract before, it was around the eight-hundred-dollar area, so that was like three years ago, so it's probably around the thousand-dollar area now. But the machine itself costs, I think, almost eight thousand dollars. So, I don't want to get rid of it. It works. It just needs some upgrading and updating.
Software.
Yeah. So, that's the part about the equipment purchases and upgrades. Then I met with Paula last week, and we discussed when our contract comes up for renewal in January. The current contract's good until the end of this year, and then we would like to renew for another three years if possible. We've been operating on fifty-six thousand dollars a year since 2006. We're going to ask for you to consider raising that yearly amount to help with some of the operating expenses. They've increased approximately seven percent, just as far as rent and cable and internet, and surprisingly enough, taxes is the thing that's stayed the lowest. Insurance, and, you know, having, each year, we have CPA do a financial statement that's required for us to do with the current contract, and that alone costs us between four hundred to six hundred dollars each year. It's just a really simple piece of paper, but it takes them time to look through every transaction, and all the receipts, and bills, and checks, and everything, just to make sure everything's up to snuff, so... And then, you know, as far as myself, in 2006, my pay was thirty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. It's been increased once by twenty-six hundred dollars to thirty-four, one thirty-eight. I did the math. If it were to raise three percent every year, this year it would be at thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, next year thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. I don't expect my pay to go from where it is now to up there. It would be nice to make a little extra money. And again, these are just numbers on paper. We would be happy with anything you guys could do to help us out financially and stuff.
And so, you know, for tonight, he's, Matt's really focusing on his equipment capital needs, and can return if you want to speak to him prior to when we get to the end of the year for renewal of that contract, so...
Yeah, just kind of a heads up. I'd probably come back in the fall when that gets closer, but, yeah, the equipment part, that would be awesome. So, the total was at five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight. That's not counting the playback system upgrades. I'm guessing tops should be a thousand dollars. If it's more than that, I'll probably argue, because I think it would be a little ridiculous if it's more than that. But the software's written in a way that they pretty much have to do it, because they know their software, so nobody can copy it and start making their own version of this. Any questions?
Can you tell us quickly how, how utilized the equipment is?
I don't have real current information, but in 2009, we had six hundred and eighty-six equipment rentals, which was about fifty-seven rentals each month. A lot of those, you know, a lot of producers have purchased their own cheaper cameras to use, because, you know, occasionally, we wouldn't have one for them to use. Scott from the government channel did send down some older cameras that he wasn't utilizing anymore, and they've kind of kept us going. But they're standard definition, they're on tape, they have their issues as well, because they're probably ten to twelve years old. So...
Matt, did you not, I thought you brought your 2013 annual report, and it has up-to-date information, and there are about forty miles.
Yeah, I'm saying, not up to date as like today.
Today, okay.
You know, six months ago.
That's okay.
We're already six months into the year, so... But, yeah, last year, that's what it was, and occasionally, we had to, you know, tell people, "We don't have a camera for you to use right now. Get back to us tomorrow, because one should be back." And we had six hundred and ninety-seven producer visits. That doesn't mean six hundred and ninety-seven different people, but throughout the year, there's so many people actually signed in when they came in. It's a lot of people walk right on by the form, but I try to make them do so. So, on average, about two hundred and twelve hours a month of bodies actually in the facility, and that's if they sign in.
Did they get the list of the different shows, too?
I did not print all those off.
Oh, they're entertaining. I can get you the full set.
Yes, there's some, there's some wild stuff on access.
I saw a certain city council member's name in there.
You'll probably see his name a lot, actually. I think he gets coaxed into going pretty often.
Yeah, I think I've set a record.
I think so. But another thing, last year, we were set up through blip.tv as far as providing online video for people to watch. They changed their terms of service and gave us thirty days to download all of our programming, which wasn't going to happen with our five megabit-per-second download speed. So, we lost a lot of our online content that hadn't backed up since, like, 2010, 2009. We started migrating to YouTube to reestablish the online video service, because they tried to do it all for free. Blip was free, and then they decided they wanted high-quality web-only content, which we did not meet their criteria, so... But it was a free service, so I guess they can do what they want. So, we started adding programming back on the website in early, early March, I believe. So, there's not a lot there, but there's some. And we do not do live streaming, unfortunately. Our bandwidth, that, if our budget was increased to where we could pay for a faster-speed internet service with a faster upload speed, we'd probably be able to do live streaming, because we've tried it, and if that's the only thing we're doing, we're good. If you go to check email, you don't even want to try.
Great.
My only comment is that there is money to cover this, and make it accessible. I decided to go.
And we'll know shortly whether it's fifty-seven hundred plus or sixty-seven.
Right. I'm hoping tomorrow, if I don't hear something tomorrow, I'll call them back, so... There is, you're not supposed to call the company, you're supposed to call sales rep at another company, but we've had issues with the sales rep we were sent to. Scott and I both on separate occasions, so we try not to deal with them.
Matt, thank you.
No problem. Thanks, Matt.
The next thing on our agenda is amendments to the Commission on Disabilities ordinance. For those of you who have kind of been keeping track, the Commission on Disabilities has been working for roughly the past seven months, seven-plus months, on going through and updating a lot of the, the bylaws on the Commission on Disabilities, as well as reviewing, again, the, the original ordinance, which was oh-seven, oh-four. It was an ordinance that was put forward by Debbie Phillips many years ago, ten years ago. Couple of things that we noticed right away that the Commission has been dealing with is that we're actually one of, a commission within the city that's growing in size. We have a number of citizens who have come forward and asked if they can be voting members on it, which isn't a bad thing to have happen as a commission. The other thing, timing is perfect, because with the MOU between the city and the university, and having to deal with some pretty, pretty important things, such as, you know, disaster or emergency preparedness plans for individuals living with disabilities, not just in the city of Athens, but Athens County, we actually need all the help we can get. So, one of the amendments to that particular piece of legislation would be to change it from nine voting members to a minimum of nine voting members, everything else staying the same, and that being that a quorum is a simple majority, or three, two-thirds vote, if you're voting on changing bylaws and things of that nature, so everything still fits. And again, if it's an even number, then it ends up being, if it's ten individuals, then we have to have a quorum of six voting members that are there for that, so none of that really changes. It's just taking, updating some things so that we fit with a changing environment when it comes to helping people who live with disabilities. The other piece that fits with, under this particular ordinance, is something that, that the Commission feels very strongly about, and that is that the city only has one award in the city that it issues, that the mayor issues to an individual, and it's the, what's been termed the Service Award for the Citizens, Citizens of Athens, and it goes to a citizen, it goes to an agency, it'll go to an organization or a business, and in the past, there have been multiple awards given out. One of the things that the Commission has recently decided is that there should just be one award that's given out annually, and that award gets vetted through the Commission on Disabilities. The Commission also feels strongly that this should be something that becomes part of our ordinance, to where it is aligned in there, which is, I understand, unusual. However, it is the only award, and it's something that I think warrants having a historical memory associated with it. As some of you are aware, I think most of us are aware, that as you roll into Athens, coming down Stimson Avenue, there's a sign that's sitting there on the side of the road that says that we are building an inclusive community, and I feel personally that this is one more step in that direction to elevate the need to recognize those who have dedicated a lot of service to individuals living with disabilities, and so therefore, raising this award to a, something that has teeth to it. It's, it's, there's meaning to this award, and raising it to a level of, of eminence, if you will. And so therefore, the Commission believes that this is something that should be within our city code. Questions, comments, concerns?
I think I discussed this with you before. I feel uncomfortable with the minimum and not a maximum, in terms of the amount of, the number of commission members. The fact that many people want to join is not a reason to increase it. If that's the case, we increase the planning commission, although I think by statute, we're limited by that, but we could also change maybe the zoning board of appeals. The minimum means, you know, almost everybody could be appointed. Whether that makes effective meetings or effective operations is a problem from my point of view. We talk about odd numbers, even numbers. There is a reason why there's odd numbers, so the vote splits one way. There is a reason why there's odd numbers, so the vote splits one way or the other. I know that you can vote by proxy, you can vote by teleconferencing, and we, that's because of the Disabilities Commission and the membership. So, I have a problem with just stating a minimum and not a maximum. As for the award, again, from my point of view, the award is not necessary to codify. I've been on there for several years where they are hard-pressed to find somebody who actually fits the service awards. And you've been on the discussions too, when does that become a valid service award if it's part of the person's job description to accommodate those with disabilities? So, I understand the thrust to make it actually more prevalent and publicize it, but I don't know if it's required to add it to the city code. So, I have questions about both items on that. I believe they've already changed the bylaws in terms of minimum, right?
Yeah.
So, they got ahead of themselves. Is that the way it plays it out? By code, we have, Athens City Code right now says nine.
Sure.
Okay. So, so the cart goes before the horse.
Well, that's one way to think of it. I think the other way to think of it is that here's a body that has gone through that piece of legislation and feel that it's time for change.
I understand that, but a minimum...
And so you have to start somewhere.
The minimum is not, is not a starting place. It's nine plus 20 plus, everybody, can I appoint everybody in the city? Will I get consensus from that? I think it's advising consent.
Right.
So, when do we, when does it become functional? I've been on meetings, I've been on committees that are 15-plus. At that point, it becomes unwieldy, creation of, actually getting an organization to meet in one place and time gets difficult. I think the dialogue I had with some of the starting members of the Disability Commission is that they fully expected to have other people involved, but not voting members. The way I understand it is that they would be, the voting members would be representatives of various organizations, various aspects of people with disabilities and needs, and it would be inclusive in that sense, but the actual voting core would be stabilized, and like any representation, it'd be fumbled into that. I would, I have no problem picking a number. I have a problem with a minimum. That's like, you know, Access TV, we'll give a minimum of $56,000. What does that mean in terms of appropriations for you guys? What does that mean for in terms of how the structure is going to evolve and expand? So...
Well, our thought was that it lends itself for flexibility. As you're aware, the Commission on Disabilities, its current membership is roughly 70% individuals who live with disabilities, and therefore, you know, I suppose we can revisit it and put a ceiling at 11 or whatever, but having as many individuals who live with disabilities wanting to be voting members to be that voice, to have the work on the Commission on Disabilities moving forward, therein, in my mind, lies the crux, is how do you honor those who live with disabilities, who walk the walk, who want to be a voting member and serve on that? So, I hear what you're saying. Maybe we can revisit it and change it to raise the number of voting members to 11 or 13 or whatever, but it lent itself to give flexibility to the Commission to honor those who want to come forward and serve on that commission.
I believe the bylaws do require attendance, right? Isn't that the case?
Oh, they do.
Okay. So, actually, the city code says that in Section C. "Member who misses three consecutive meetings without excused absence shall be automatically ceased to be a member." So, you have a method for getting people who need to be involved versus not involved. I know that times there have been members who haven't shown up for a length of time. So, maybe, you know, is there, and I don't think there's term limits at this point, too.
There is.
There is.
Three years.
Three years.
Three years with the ability to, to...
Three terms?
Two, three-year terms is the max.
Okay. So, there is, there is some turnover for those involved?
Some.
Okay. But a minimum, I don't think is acceptable.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And it's only because I was copying on an email stream, and I've been requested to sit with the Athens Village Advisory Board Subcommittee Task Force, and the Athens Village is a group of people who are trying to join the membership and then try to age in place. And this was just last week, and they were identifying different issues such as the sidewalks and snow removal and things that we've talked about. And I said, "Hey, did you guys know we have a really active Disabilities Commission?" And then I was copying on an email about who are we going to represent and serve? So, I kind of need to know where that conversation is going because I thought perhaps our elderly citizens would automatically maybe be included and, you know, like you've always said, we're temporarily able-bodied, you know? I've got my own, you know, disabled person at my house, and it's just a matter of a sprain, what have you, a twist, a fall, and we're all there. So, I guess as you move forward in that conversation, can you ask about, you know, is that all a representation for them as well, or is it more, "No, you seniors, you stay in your senior block"? You know what I mean? I don't know. That's what I was trying to find out.
I do. I mean, we don't discriminate.
I didn't mean anything.
We, we have, yeah, I hear, your point well taken. On the Commission, if I were to kind of look across around the table, we have an age range that runs from, I think, 81 down to 29. So, it's a pretty broad spectrum when it comes to that particular topic. I can speak to one of our members, one of the, not a voting member, but someone who shows up, who was one of the charter members, Mrs. Barry Dilly, and she has raised the same issue that you're bringing up, is that, you know, couldn't we, can we also advocate for, for older adults in Athens? Again, by doing that, we've got a commission that's going to, by default, have to grow in size to cover all of our bases.
So, would it become the Commission on Disabilities and the elderly?
Aging? I don't, I don't know, but I mean...
Aging, is that the more appropriate word?
I'm sitting around a table, which I was, with a number of people...
Older adults.
Yeah, older adults who have mobility issues and other things, that not just mobility. You know, I've been the one all along that wants to change the universal sign from the wheelchair to a heart because we just, you know, you never know what it is to that, that's happened to that individual. You can't tell sometimes on what that disability is. It's certainly not always apparent, so...
Two, two questions for our other boards and commissions that are, that operate under the city, like the Historic Preservation Committee, the Environmental Sustainability, I think we have, you know, the...
Mutual Relations Commission.
Yeah, the Environmental Sustainability one says five members, and we recently amended it to include two from the county. So, this is my own ignorance, but about the Disabilities Commission, do they have, are they self-identifying, or do we say, we could say, "And one senior," or one, you know, older citizen on the commission, or, you know, how that is?
Part of the thing, we have representation from groups like HAVR, NAMI, who else? Gathering Place, I think, still, maybe? That, when you start saying, "Okay, let's qualify," unlike some of the other ones that say, "We want somebody who has, you know, citizen member here, somebody, an architect there." When do you kick in the, you know, you know, the decoration of disability, HEPA rules or whatever they are, getting, the interest, the participation actually many times has somebody, a loved one, who's actually they're dealing with, and therefore their concern goes, you know, their concern is because how do we, you know, be inclusive? How do we fit everybody in on that? Again, I have no, I have no problem with the idea of increasing the size of it, knowing full well that there's a certain unwillingness that occurs. And again, they, we make allowances for those who can't make it every time, I mean, whether it's telephones or whether it's, you know, by proxy. Most of, most of the other boards don't really operate that well, like with that type of thing. We don't have those clauses in here. My participation in Disabilities Commission has actually backed off in the past couple of months, mostly because they are robust. I'll give it that. They're operating full steam, they've got, they're dealing with issues, they're doing very well. So, I don't, I don't really worry about them, which is one reason why I attended a lot. So, I understand the need for that because there are people who would like to be in on it, but that doesn't mean the voting is not, is, to my mind, is voting is not that, you know, clear-cut. If they want to participate, there's nothing requiring them to be a voting member at the time. I mean, it's nice to put them in there, but the fact is that there's, you know, there's the concept, again, talking to Barry Dilly when she showed up a couple of months ago, was that she fully expected to have this outreach of non-voting members, of people associating with it, and it wasn't such to be the membership only operating. In one sense, that works because each of them, whether it's NAMI or HAVR, they do participate, they represent those blocks of needs, you know, ATCO, you know, Passion Works. These are the people who are actually saying, "Yes, you know, I'm coming from this area, I'm coming from this expertise." I expect them to have a lot of communication with their, their, their membership, their clients, their people. So, therefore, to say, "Okay, everybody who's in ATCO now is a voting member because they all want to participate," that to me is kind of like, gets unwieldy real quick. And I, and again, you're talking about a minimum. You don't, not have that upper, upper limit, which is why my concern is. I've been in, you know, I look about 15 as being the limit. J-PAC would tell you that, right? J-PAC is a, is a pretty, pretty cumbersome thing to put together, but it represents two different, very diverse groups.
Right.
But I've, I've been on meetings that they, once they get to a certain limit, they, getting everybody together is a difficult thing, getting everybody even consensus. If they're not getting together every time, even gets more difficult.
Sure.
Okay? Again, I would say pick a number.
Point taken.
Okay.
Point taken. I mean, I, as Chair of the Commission on Disabilities, I can certainly go back and we can amend the, you know, the bylaws. That's not a big issue. But again, is to bring it forward. I think one of my main points too with this is to highlight the amount of work that we have under the Commission on Disabilities, and you said it yourself, is that it has been pretty robust, that the meetings have been going very well, and we're, we've got a plate full of things to do, to include doing, you know, all kinds of things, you know, a sidewalk survey of the entire city is what one member wants to do, and that's going to be Herculean in and of itself, but...
You don't want to have to reinvent that wheel, though.
Yes. No, 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 no. And that's been explained, yeah. No, don't worry. It won't be reinvented.
I will tell you that the seniors that are with sidewalks was a prime issue as well, conditions.
And we did a sidewalk survey. Chris Nysley actually participated in that.
Sure.
Andy Lashbaum actually used as an advocate for Stimson Avenue in terms of wheelchair accessibility. He can show you a binder, that statistic, where he's, he's been lobbying Andy Stone and us for, before my administration.
Sure.
So...
We made a number of those improvements.
Yes, we have. Yes. You know, so it is, it is good to move the ball forward. The question arises, I know we're kind of being carried along by OU too. They have their own organization there too, and you're working with them, but, you know, in terms of scope and energies, you know...
That's true, but I can honestly say we're the ones driving that.
Okay.
We're taking the lead on, that's a whole different topic that probably shouldn't be gotten into in this venue.
Attend the next Disabilities Commission if you want to.
That's right. Point taken, though. I, I will go back to the Commission and, and we'll put a cap, a number on it, but it will be higher than nine that comes forward because, like I said, we need the work, we need, we need the help because we've got the work.
Okay.
Moving on to our last item, unless we have something under miscellaneous, is again, an item that came up, was actually, came up in council back in January of this year, which is barking dogs and how to deal with that. What the, what the issue was, was for someone to call in and have a complaint during the day of a dog that's excessively barking, yapping, whatever, and is disturbing the peace, is that you can call the police department, the police department will respond to that household, but if no one is there, they can't issue a citation to that particular house. I've had a conversation with, with Chief Pyle as well as Deputy Law Director Lisa Eliasen on this issue, and essentially, the solution that came forward with how to best handle this would be do something similar to what you see with the noise ordinance, is that if there is no one home, a civil penalty or fine, a pocket ticket can be administered, you know, to the residents of the house. An individual would have 30 days to pay that fine. If they don't, then it turns into a fourth-degree misdemeanor and go through the appeal process that way. But again, currently, with, as it stands right now, an officer would have to know to come back later on when the, when an individual is at home. It's usually, it's primarily a daytime problem when it is a problem. And looking at the police report, and again, there's, I've not come across anything that specifically speaks to dog barking, but when you look at Chief Pyle's crime statistics from 2013, you will see a couple items in here that fit with what we're talking about, and animal calls is one of them, but again, knowing full well that can be an animal call of any type for anything. I suppose it could probably even be deer in the street, but...
See a raccoon, plump, they see a rat. We've had people come up in front of council about rats.
Question, would this be then a citation issued to the property owner?
To the property owner.
Okay. So, in a case of rentals, then it would be going to the property? Would the ticket be left there, or just issued to the property owner?
To the residence.
And mailed to them?
To the house is what the police chief requests. He's still not sure if this is fully grasping. He, he really wanted the, similar to litter violations, graduated so that by the time you got your third one, you may, "Well, maybe I don't want..." You know, I'll, my, my other fear, and you know, I've kind of been a little reticent to bring this forward because we're talking about people's animals, which again, I would say are part of their family, is what happens when the neighbor is complaining and they're inside the house? And I get that maybe the disciple, but that's, that's just another thought out there, so... I had a dog that barked all the time, so to say.
The latest report I got, which is from June 22nd, again, reporting period, it looks like for the year to date, there's been one dog bite, noise complaint, there were four last week, and 306, which caused noise complaints, or noise complaints. And as you say, animal calls, there were two in the week from the 16th to 22nd, and 65 year-to-date. Again, this covers every animal that we could think of.
Sure.
So, I'm not sure if, you know, I'd like to get more data one way or the other. If I went through the calls for services, backtracked through the year, there's really, if I did a search on it through the Excel thing saying, "Okay, dog," and I got one dog bite. So, I'd like to find out how much of a problem it is before we start issuing, starting this as a citation. Obviously, either we're not parsing out the animal calls properly, or there not, aren't a lot of these. I'm not sure which. The other thing is, if you do a citation, you have to have a mechanism for appeals somewhere along. Just not a citation, and then, you know, 30 days later, if somebody's, you know, tears it up and throws it in the garbage, a, you know, a criminal offense, which is what they would go to eventually, I believe.
Now, they did think today, the captain said, "The majority probably are under noise." We'd have asked to see whether or not they could include an additional category so that we can really capture the complaints and the issues and so...
I will share with you that when people talk in the neighborhood, to me, one of the complaints has been, "What do we do about a barking dog?" And it is dogs, I'm sorry, Paul, but dogs inside the house.
See?
You know, that they, you know, they've got five animals in the basement, and, you know, they leave to go somewhere, and they're barking. The other instance, when I went door-to-door with the last campaign and just talking to citizens about what their issues were, and a near-east side resident who works at home, and dogs are let out, you know, for an hour or so, maybe at 6:00 in the morning before somebody goes to work, and they just let them outside and let them bark, or leave for work, leave the dogs outside, and then they're barking all day. And if you're trying to operate the house, which more and more people are doing, you know, telecommuting and things like that, then it, it makes for a problem. Quality of life in the neighborhood.
Thank you. And all due respect, Mayor, I might disagree with you on the data collection because I think many citizens are hesitant to call because they, they get along with their neighbors well, but they feel afraid or they're not compelled to necessarily call the cops, the police, the authority, something... police, the authority, on something such as this. But, but it is a quality of life issue, and I've had probably a dozen or more conversations over the years with people who are really concerned about this issue, and it's, and I might argue that if, if we are talking about a loved one that isn't, that is a pet, then why are we leaving them out for so long, when they're pack animals and they want to be with their owner? So I, I think there's an education issue here, as well as an opportunity for us to act and make change, because what's not, it's not working right now.
But what you're saying, if the case is changing law and nobody's reporting it, the actual final product will be the same. I mean, nobody's going to report it if they're, if they're going to get their, the next-door neighbor in trouble. They're not being neighborly at that point. So in other words, changing the law will not change the non-reporting aspect of this, will it?
I think perhaps that might be the case, but I think that people might feel compelled to call if they know there's action, and that this is a changed law, in which there will be a citation, a fee, a fine, versus now that they don't want to bother the police, because it gets bumped to the bottom end of what's important in, in a police officer's responsibility, you know, during, during the day.
Well, the difficulty is actually for them to come back and cite the person in person, which is what the requirement is now. So therefore, to say, we're just going to write a ticket, you know, drop a ticket on the front door, it may, you know, I can see that might actually affect some people.
Yeah.
Make it easier for them to call, saying that this, this random drive-by ticket would make it better. On the other hand, you know, if somebody ignores it, and now they've got a ticket, you know, that they tore up, or the tenant, again, it's the tenant who would probably say, just disregard it, because he's not going to pay it, or maybe he won't pay it. The property owner, at that point, would be the second line, where they, all of a sudden, they've got the, the issue. And of course, you know, if they let the dog in as a rental, that's an issue right there. If they're pack animals, maybe the other solution is to drop off another puppy in the, in the, in the backyard, you know? You know, maybe that will make it, them happier or something, I don't know. If they're all the family, and they're herd animals, so...
Steve, I, I just ditto what these other council members have said. It's been an issue that I've heard from people. It's been ongoing. It's, and I think the point that you mentioned, Chris, is that there are more people working at home, and there is a lot of dog barking. I know some days, you hear a lot of dogs barking, and I, you know, and wasn't there somewhere in our ordinance that there was a 15-minute rule? Am I making that up in my head, or did I think? Because I think back in the day, I called once, and someone said, you know, so you put your dog out, it goes to the bathroom, it does whatever, but it was like a 15-minute... I don't know, maybe that's not the ordinance in this city.
Maybe it was something under the animal control officer.
Maybe under animal control officer. Exactly. You know, that, and most people can handle a dog barking for a short period of time, but consistent dog barking is quite irritating. It, it is.
A raise.
Comment, or I guess, here's what I'm trying to grasp. We give tickets for littering and other nuisances in order to attempt to change someone's behavior so they will not be littering anymore. The idea is, we will inflict pain upon you to the point where it'll be less of a pain to clean up your act than it would be to continue to get these tickets and citations and possibly go to court. Now, okay, you ticket the owner of the dog, or the property owner, how does that change the dog's behavior? And it doesn't. There's no mechanism there that will actually make the dog stop barking. Shoot the dog? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, except the owner, then, because this happened, across the street from me. Then the owner doesn't leave the dog out all the time.
Well, okay, how about the dogs in the house? Most of them are in the house. Not, I see very few dogs actually stink out.
No, that's not true.
Okay, well, let's say that it isn't true. Let's just say, it's 10%. What do you do about that 10%? How do you cure that problem? Well, I, I guess I just don't see this as a solution. I mean, it's, well, if you want to pass an ordinance, fine, but I just don't see how it's going to help anything.
On the other side, we could always modify the noise ordinance side of it, and say, this is, this is just regular old noise, you know, is as a complaint, we deal with it as noise.
Okay. Again, how does that fix the dog?
Mayor, that's what it is, is that this is an ordinance that, I'm sorry, this falls under Title 13, which is, and it's under the unnecessary noise, so it really is. It's, it's, it would be number 10 in a list of nine, which includes machine noise, stereo noise.
Right. I can turn that off, I can turn that down. I can tell my son not to hit the guitar so loud, but how do I correct the behavior of the dogs?
You train the dog. I guess.
So there were, okay, so now we're, you know, we're finally getting to my point, okay, is that somewhere along the line, there has to be some modification of the dog's behavior. And like they say, they really, it is true, you can't teach an old dog new tricks. It ain't going to happen. The, the only solution that's going to come out of this is, you're going to have to get rid of the dog.
I don't know. Don't they have shock collars? I don't have a dog, so I don't, I haven't had a dog, it's fine.
I have a cat.
The fact is, you know, you can't, you can't actually punish a dog. You can say, I, I can't have the dog anymore. Or I, I, I don't mind paying the fine, because I love my dog so much. Okay. So we could have an escalating amount, just like the litter, where it gets up to be $100 a shot for every, every woof, you know, and then that's, eventually, they say that's worth it, or not.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't know. Again, if, but if nobody's reporting it, that's another issue, too. I don't, I don't see the numbers here, you know? I know most of the noise complaints are probably not dogs. They'll probably fall into the realm of, you know, you know, parties. 65 complaints of animal calls? I don't know, there's a lot of species out there besides things, so I have to assume this makes a fraction of it. I'd like to see those numbers before we start changing. We, I don't mind, if you want to look at it and change it. I would want to work with the chief and make sure it's actually something that will work, though.
That's true.
Or at least be of ease to there enforcement.
I just wanted to point out that according to this wording in an email, which, excuse me, might not be what you end up with, it's the same as the noise ordinance. That barking during the day is not going to be covered on this.
It'd be complaint-based.
Complaint.
That's the only way.
It is complaint-based.
Yeah.
But if they're not complaining, because they don't want bad neighbors.
But also, if they're not complaining, they're not, you know, they may not be complaining, because they realize that there's nothing that can be done during the day if that dog is sitting there and the owners aren't home, because, because nothing can be done.
Well, honestly, we have neighbors that have dogs, and the police have been there, and I'm pretty sure that's why they were there a while back. And they started bringing them in the house more. They bark at everything. But we also have a dog, who's outside occasionally, and barks occasionally. But our dog doesn't bark at the neighbors and the things, things that happen every day, all the time, only at strange things that might go on, whereas these dogs will bark.
And a dog like that should be inside.
Soon as I go out my back door, when they can't even see me, but they, they start barking, you know?
Right. And a dog like that should be inside, because it's agitated, being outside, if it's that anxious.
Right.
And agitated, that it barks at every possible movement.
And there's more than one, so, you know, having a buddy is not keeping that, it just adds more to it, and they stir up some other neighbors that are behind them, their dogs, and it gets to be...
Snowballs.
I mean, Kent probably knows what I'm talking about, because it's, it's been an issue there, and, yeah.
Let me say that there is, there's currently an ordinance, it's under Title V, that basically states that it shall be unlawful for any person to harbor or keep a dog that, which is loud, which by loud or frequent or habitual barking, howling, yelping, shall cause an annoyance and disturbance to the neighborhood, period. That's what the ordinance says. It doesn't say anything about fines, it doesn't say anything about how it's dealt with, it just says you can't do it.
Right.
And that's on our books currently.
That's currently on the books, and then if you dig deeper into Title 13, there's one line in there that speaks to animal sounds, but again, it doesn't carry any weight to it, and this is the only...
I thought everything under Title, Chapter 5, was a minor misdemeanor, but I'd have to check.
I'd have to, yeah.
It's usually at the back end of the whole chapter. Everything above is, you know...
It's a strange animal noise, yeah, yeah, point will be...
That would include the barking door.
Right.
But then again, the chief has said it was difficult for him to...
Do the citation, yeah.
Yes.
Actually be there and hand it to somebody on the door, yes.
So we have something on the books right now, we just, I think what we're discussing is making it more...
Making it towards literally what's called a pocket ticket. It can be stuck to the front door and walk away, much like it can be stuck to the windshield of your car if it's a parking violation that warrants a pocket ticket. The same thing that holds true for, you know, illegal, being illegally parked in, in accessible parking space, and you don't deserve to be there, you can get a pocket ticket slapped on your windshield for that as well, and that's $250 fine.
I mean, some of these people may not realize their dogs are barking like this when they're gone, you know? The dogs that maybe are nice when they arrive, I don't know, and they stop barking, but, you know?
Disabilities, huh?
I, I personally would like to see this move forward, because it's something I've heard about for a long time.
Well, start with the draft. I, I think the last draft I saw had talked about decibel levels, and I don't think that works for us.
Decibel levels.
It never has. The 50-foot rule works, a citation would work, as long as we figure out some way to make sure that somebody can prove that dog wasn't barking, it isn't a nuisance, which I'd have difficulty, if it is a nuisance, it's a nuisance.
Well, if the officer arrives and he's 50 feet away, and the dog's barking, 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 you know?
Yeah. Well, Chief Pyle said that that's the way to go, is the primifacial 50-foot rule, where if an officer rolls up and can hear it from 50 feet away, and it's sustained barking, that's when a citation gets issued. You're right, the decibels, 85 decibels, I don't think the city of Athens has ever used a meter to sit there and try and meter sound from anywhere. And that's actually something that might even be worth visiting, because it falls under other areas of noise ordinance that speaks about, you know, it just, it's not used.
It's there, but we use the 50-foot rule.
50-foot rule.
And there's topography issues, too. You can, if you talk to anybody in, you know...
In the hills.
In the hills, yes.
For the haulers.
They're aware of the fact that sound carries, in our words.
Sure.
Okay. Something cracked.
Well, yeah, because 50 feet, the houses across the street from me aren't, are barely 10 feet apart, you know, and there's a lot of neighborhoods in town that are like that, so...
Yeah. I think if somebody got a complaint, and the, the police officer rolls up and can hear the dog, it's, should be dealt with.
I agree.
You know, and I would, I would add as well, too, something that as a city, we may want to consider long-term, is increasing our police staff, so that we can afford to have more staffing, and to have police officers on the beat, walking through the neighborhoods, because when you're walking the street, you're able to hear and see things that you can't see from a cruiser.
How about an animal control officer instead? I mean, if we're going to have somebody designated for that, and we had discussed this a couple years back, I think I had a discussion with some of the county commissions, because at one time, we shared the resource, they weren't that interested in it, but I was standing there.
So do we pay for that at all, so that, so the, the animal control work does not come to the city of Athens?
They do, but if, portionally, depends on my license, dog licenses, I believe, is what funds the, the process. But again, the footprint of the county is much bigger than the footprint of the city.
And you're saying that most people in the city do not have their dog's license?
No, I'm saying that if you're going to, if you're going to, the animal control officer has to respond to something.
Right.
There's more territory out there to respond to.
They will respond, and they should be called if you, you know, see a rabid raccoon or, you could go on and on and on.
And other, animals, dogs, too.
And they should, you know, running dogs that lose, same thing.
Right.
But by the time they get there, I mean, if that's, you know, they have to cover the county response times pretty, pretty long. It's like us trying to contract, you know, it's one of the volunteer fire departments out in Kansas.
It was nice when the animal control person lived into my neighborhood, that was nice. But they don't anymore.
The auditor wanted to point out, it's actually the dog warden.
Dog.
They don't have an animal control officer.
Employed by the county, yeah.
But you pay your...
We used to have an animal control officer that we shared with the county, but we don't have that position at all.
So we have a dog warden. The county has one.
County has a dog warden.
Which is funded by dog licenses.
Correct.
And they have six or seven employees at the county dog shelter.
Is that something we may, we may want to reexamine, an animal control officer for the city?
If we have the funds.
Well, yeah, I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know.
Right. You know, my police chief isn't here, but I can hear him now. If I need another officer, I need another officer, boots-on-the-ground officer. So this is kind of going that way.
So then, then the ordinances need to be able to, you know, be written, or, so they, they're utilized properly by the police officers, that they can...
I think we're all agreeing to that, so...
That's a tool.
Yeah. Let's get it done.
It is one more tool.
All right, we'll get it done.
Um, miscellaneous, do I have any miscellaneous?
I don't think so.
There you go.
Okay, we'll move into our special session. We have one ordinance for second reading. We do have a quorum present tonight, of council members, and so we have an ordinance for second reading, I think, Member Nysley, you can hand it to them?
Yes, and this is the ordinance that we began the first reading of next, last week. It's ordinance 5414, an ordinance to increase the city income tax by 10 hundredths of a percent for annum. And I would move to amend ordinance 5414. The purpose of the amendment being to make a minor clarification in the language. Shall I go ahead with the explanation then? Section 2, last week, you may recall that we had the description of what the levy, this is for arts parks and recreation, and what this levy would pay for. And the language stated that it would pay for any and all expenses associated with construction, equipment, and furnishing of a swimming pool. And then goes on to say, accessibility to all playgrounds, trails, and facilities. We added the words last week, property acquisition, and then had maintenance, operation, and staffing of existing and new arts parks and recreation facilities and grounds in the city of Athens. What the suggestion is on the amendment is to take the word, "equipment and furnishing" into that section, too, and rather than have it applied solely to the swimming pool, what we would do is move that same phrase, "equipment and furnishing," to later in the, in that section, so that it comes immediately after property acquisition. So that "equipment and furnishing" would then be able to apply to other community center or arts facilities in the, within the city. And it would broaden it slightly, it's not adding to the language of the levy, but mainly replay, moving the phrase to clarify it. Any questions or comments from council members? Okay.
Better use of the language.
I think, yes.
Mayor?
Is that a motion, is that being amended, then, or is that...
That is a motion to amend, Councilmember Patterson seconded.
Okay.
And that would move that one phrase, "equipment and furnishing," to after the word, "property acquisition."
Okay. All those in favor of changing the language signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to changing, same sign? Okay. The language of the ordinance is changed and is read for the first time. So we're going to leave it for tonight?
Yes, correct. We'll amend it tonight, have a reading on July 7 and 14. We will also have a resolution moving forward to submit the text to the Board of Elections. That resolution would be read on July 7, 14, and 21. So many thanks to the Clerk of Council, Debbie Walker, who's helped with facilitating all this, and various administration and staff, so that we can get it to the next step to the Board of Elections by August 6.
We'll move on for several ordinances for first reading. We're going to move on, for several ordinances for first reading, I believe it's to Councilmember Patty Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. So 5814, 5914, 6014, and 6114, all relate to Bounty on the Bridge, which is the fundraiser August 9th, for our community food pantries. And there was a presentation last week, and so that's what these ordinances are about, to close Court Street for this event.
And parking in the garage, glass-free containers.
Glass-free containers, and noise, I don't think we have to do a noise ordinance on this, we don't. Free parking in the parking garage.
Yeah.
Oh, vending, sorry, yes, vending.
Okay, and so we'll probably pass these under suspension of the rules at next meeting.
Correct.
Well, we will talk about that later. Again, Member Patty, 6214.
I move to suspend 64, 6214, second. And earlier this evening, in committee, we discussed this particular ordinance, and the need to particularly move forward, due to the fact that there has been a bid, and we always need to get our construction work done in a timely fashion in the summer, so we are moving to suspend.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Did we? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. All those in favor of suspending the rules for ordinance 6214, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Again, Member Patty?
So I move forward, Mr. President, 6214, to adopt.
Second.
And again, this is the West Union Street project, we just learned earlier this evening, we will be able to do the stormwater retention with the additional monies, and the additional appropriations were requested.
Mayor, do you have anything to add?
Nope. Good to go.
All those in favor of passing ordinance 6214, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Sounds unanimous to me. Thank you. Just before we adjourn, we do have a decision to make about meeting next Monday. We can wait a week and pass these ordinances about Bounty on the Brick in two weeks, or we can meet again next Monday. Any preference?
The only comment I would make is, you know, we'll have read the bounty two times, and suspend, and move forward, so as long as everyone is, you know.
And we'll have some of the other ones that we brought up this evening.
The earlier, yeah. So, I mean, the 7th, right, is what we're talking about? Or are you saying?
The president of council is asking about the 30th.
We're asking him, I'm asking about skipping next Monday.
Right.
Which is the 30th.
Which is the fifth Monday.
The fifth Monday.
Which traditionally, we always do. I'm a big believer in tradition.
I thought.
Bounty on the Bridge, while it was suspended on the second meeting, is an event that was well-received by the community last year, and we asked for additional information, and seemed to have received the information we requested, so I wouldn't see a problem.
Anybody out there have a problem with skipping Monday?
No, I've been telling everyone it'd be the 7th, is the earliest that evening, when we have things passed.
Okay, if it's okay, we will not meet next Monday, the 30th. Our next meeting will be Monday, the 7th of July. We're closed, we're done. Thank you.